It's a good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to remind everyone to please be sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position, and also please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. The meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ava Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Yep.
Back?
Here.
Wilson? I think he's here, somewhere. Cannon?
Here.
And Councilwoman Reed is absent today. We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we thank you for today. We thank you for the blessings of life. God, we thank you for your word. And we were reminded of the words in James that says, "Where there's envy and strife, there's confusion and all evil work." God, we know that there's disagreement even within this room. But God, I pray that today, that you'll shine through us and through that confusion. And God, that you'll remind us as this body, that outside these walls are those who are hungry, who are needy, and need your help. And everything else is simply noise. So God, we thank you for giving us the opportunity to stop and seek your wisdom. And I ask your knowledge for this council today and the decisions they'll make. We promise to give you the glory and the praise. And thank you for your Son, Jesus, and what he did for us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll have our update from Ms. Gaither.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Time my glasses. Sometimes I think I can see and then I remember I can't real quick. Okay. Not all the news on the update is bad, but I will go ahead and say our numbers are greatly increasing. In the last week, we've had 423 new cases, and that's at least 60 per day. And these are, the majority of these are of the Delta variant. Our positivity rate has increased again, and it is now up to 35.2, and it's the highest we've ever seen in the entire pandemic, and we are still higher than the statewide average. Our death count has sadly risen again, and we're at 377. Part of the good news is, in the last month, vaccinations have increased by 5.1% for the first dose. Hope to see that all of these do get to return for their second dose. The significant increase in deaths right now are between the ages of 25 and 49, at 13.8%, and 62.6% of these are white, Caucasian. Both hospitals are on diversion at this time, and so we want to make sure that everyone understands what that means. Diversion means they are not accepting new patients. They're having to transport them to other locations, which in return ties up an ambulance to go to another county, more than likely another state. So if you have the normalcies that they see every day, heart attack, stroke, car wreck, just an accident at home, more than likely, your wait is going to be very long and painful. So I don't want to sugarcoat that. We have quadrupled the number of response calls of a person under investigation for COVID. And I believe that the Chief probably could update more on that if he would like to. Would you like to give an update?
Yeah, we were going to ask the Chief to add.
Three weeks ago, in addition to our normal responses, we ran 10 PUI persons under investigation calls. Week before last, we ran 13. This previous week, we ran 30. So our numbers have tripled just in our emergency responses to COVID and COVID-type calls. As Ms. Gaither said, both hospitals are at capacity. I'd encourage everyone to use the emergency rooms for what they're for, for emergencies. We have people going in for things that should be going to urgent care centers. So if they can go to their doctor's office, or what we call, refer to as a doc in a box, an urgent care center, they would be seen quicker and better tended to right now because, as one director told me yesterday, they are drowning. So I encourage everyone to, if you go to the emergency room, it needs to be an emergency. Not trying to scare anyone, it's just a fact. The hospitals here are full. They tried to transfer some patients in from South Carolina yesterday to Gaston. There's no room here for them. So we're not in this by ourselves. This is a nationwide problem right now.
So is it true that it was saying that there's only two IC beds in the whole state of Alabama?
As of lunch yesterday, there was two ICU beds in the entire state. That's not in Gaston, that's the entire state of Alabama. There was two critical care beds, yes ma'am. I don't know what the numbers are today. I've been in meetings all morning and haven't had a chance to check. Okay.
Councilwoman Wilson, have a question.
Chief, can you give me an update? How are the, how are our firefighters doing mentally and physically? Are their health?
Firefighters really won't tell you how they're doing mentally.
Yeah, sure.
They're sort of private lot. Physically, they seem to be doing fine. I have one firefighter out right now with COVID. That number could change because I have one that's being tested. They're like everybody else. They're tired. They're tired of COVID being here because it puts an additional strain on them, them worrying about their families, they're worried about what they're going to get here, what they're going to get at home. It's just like the police and fire, both, they're just in it all day. Please tell them how much we appreciate them. Sure will. Thank you, sir.
This is a general comment as it relates to our first responder relative agencies. You know, I know that we ran into a supply chain issue in the first round of COVID where it was difficult to get PPE and a lot of things needed to do your jobs. Is that something you can address in terms of our preemptive measures?
Yes, I do have to underline this.
Okay.
We'll go ahead and cover that if you'd like. Supply chains are backed up. And then those that aren't backed up are doing what businesses do, try to make more money. So just like we talked about last time, if you have stock, that's precious right now. So use it to the best of your ability. We don't have the option that we had last time of taking our N95 masks to Patel and letting them disinfect those and bring them back for our firefighters to use. That was a state contract, and that contract's gone, so we cannot recycle N95 masks for our first responders anymore. So we are having difficulty in finding supply if we didn't already have it. And that's, once again, that's not just for us, that's statewide also.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
Ms. Gaither?
Yes.
Real quick, I just want to let you know, Andrew Ford, the owner of ZLA Solutions, told me that he has a pretty significant stockpile of three-ply masks in his inventory over there. So if that's a potential solution, reach out to him.
Okay, yeah, that will be for some events.
Okay.
Our first responders will be those N95 or KN95s. So if we find anyone that's a provider for those at a reasonable price and has them in stock, that's probably something we need to look at. And I'm not sure exactly how much, I saw Nick, oh, there he is, how many he had in stock also. So that may be something you want to talk with Nick about, how many are in stock here. Okay. We'll move on to vaccines. I do want to say that in Etowah County, if you want a vaccine, there is no excuse for you not to get a vaccine. And here are some of the reasons why, community pulling together. We have the Etowah County Rural Transportation Department that will transport for free anyone that is in the rural area of Etowah County to receive a vaccine. You have to make an appointment with them, but to make that appointment, you just call And they'll drop you off, you get your shot, you wait your 15 minutes, but they'll have to come back and get you. They can't stay and wait. So that's awesome help for those who don't have transportation. I want to remind everybody, there are no fees for vaccinations unless some doctor's offices are charging for an administration and a doctor's office visit. It's not for the vaccine. So when people say that, well, my doctor's office charged me for it, what they're really charging you for is for administration and a doctor's office visit, not for the vaccine This Saturday is the Drake Patrick Foundation and the Quality of Life Services Vaccine Clinic. It's going to be held at the Jasmine Lopez Agency from noon until 3:00 PM. It's on Forest Avenue, right across the street from the Etowah County Courthouse. The parking will be at the Etowah County Courthouse. This clinic is geared to support our African-American and our Spanish-speaking residents. Translator will be on site to help with questions. They will also serve free hot dogs and sodas. Vaccinate Gaston and Vaccinate Atala vouchers will be available at this location. Email will also be on site with masks, gloves, sanitizers, and a few more giveaways. So we're hoping that this is a very good turnout for this one, this coming Saturday from noon until 3:00. The Health Department is testing again. They have had so many people requesting tests that they encourage you to make an appointment now. Testing is Monday through Friday from 9:00 AM until 11:00 AM, and you can call the 256, and this is a different number than we've been giving out, so everyone will want to take note of this one for testing. And then Monday through Friday, they have extended the vaccination clinics from 9:00 until 3:00. Walk-ins are welcome. They're not backed up at the vaccine clinic, but they're backed up at the testing clinic. So just wanted you to have that information. On our Facebook page is an entire portion that is giving you the schedule for vaccine clinics that are throughout Etowah County and in the City of Gaston. So there are numerous. We have at least through August, another seven to, no, eight that are scheduled. So that's a good number. You've got plenty of selections. Then, let's talk a minute about Vaccinate Gaston. Our email count's gone up, requesting information. We've had 900 telephone calls, probably more than that, because I didn't take a look this morning. Then, we have 195 new vaccinated citizens this week, this past week, for Vaccinate Gaston. That brings our total up to 607 residents. Of course, this is a 3% either way, up or down. Human error could have made a couple of mistakes. After next week, I want everybody to be aware, it's going to become increasingly more difficult for us to get an accurate count. And the reason is, we'll start into second doses next week for a lot of people. So in planning, I'll be the first to say, I didn't ask the pharmacies to take into account that you're going to have first doses and second doses. So I don't want those second doses to get counted twice. So we're going to try to figure that out between now and next Monday, but I don't want to put more work on the pharmacist and their staff because they've done so much to help and work with us. Some of those, let me just call out those pharmacies if you give me just a few minutes, because I really want to thank them for what they're doing. Of course, the Etowah County Health Department, Quality of Life Services, Corporate Pharmacy Services here on Broad Street, Alaco Discount Pharmacy in Glencoe, Super B Pharmacy in Rainbow City, Winn-Dixie Pharmacy in Rainbow City, Rick's Pharmacy, Gaston City Pharmacy, Physicians Apothecary, Riverside Pharmacy, Jerry's Pharmacy, Walgreens in Rainbow City, and in Gaston, and then Cornerstone Family Pharmacy. They've all done an outstanding job at trying to get the word out, sharing information. They've, I'm quite sure they've taken the brunt of some of the complaints and arguments that we haven't had to deal with, and I really, really appreciate what they're doing. And just ask that you shop local. A lot of these pharmacies have other things than just the vaccine. Go and support them. Any questions?
Yes, Ms. Gaither, I've got a couple of follow-ups. I've been getting some messages while you were speaking. So first of all, an individual with fascinol and Atala said they have K-N95 masks in stock, and they'd be willing to work with the city on that, or the MA. The one question I got from an individual said, "Is there any plans to introduce these antibody delivery setups similar to what they announced in Florida this week, I think, where you can come in and get an antibody shot?" And the second question was concerning prisoners incarcerated in Etowah County. Can you give any sort of insight as to what their vaccination rates are, what the policy are, is around incarcerated citizens?
Well, and I'll speak to the incarcerated first. They are offered the vaccine. If they do not want it, we cannot mandate that they take it. So everyone in Etowah County that's incarcerated has been offered the vaccine.
Gotcha.
I don't have the rate of those that chose to, but that's something I could get, could get for you. And the antibody injections, I've not heard discussions here in Alabama of any county at this time going to do that. That doesn't mean that it won't happen, but I've not been in on those discussions.
And that's commonly referred to as the infusion.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. That's correct.
Ms. Gaither, about the booster shots, someone just texted me about, wanted to know about the booster shots. You know anything about the booster shots yet?
And the booster shots are going to be specific right now to those who are immunocompromised. We should get a list from the Alabama Department of Public Health of those that will qualify for that. But right now, it's just those that are immunocompromised, and they're going to try to create a specific list for us to advertise. And when we get it, we'll put that out, social media, Facebook, Twitter, and then also to our press.
And one more question, this is from me. The death rate, you said we had 377, but about three weeks ago before we started into this surge, how many deaths have we had? Do you know?
We have added 18 in three weeks, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you, Ms. Gaither. We appreciate everything that you're doing.
We will continue with our agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the city council meeting held on August the 10th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be numbered, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of August the 6th through the 12th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be numbered, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation. Unfinished business, we have none today. We have a resolution authorizing agreement between the City of Gaston, the Etowah County Commission, and the Sheriff of Etowah County. And this is a contract for housing city prisoners in the Etowah County Detention Center. The term is for one year, and the amount is 62,500 per month. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Discussions, I believe Councilman Reed called the city clerk office and wanted to make note that he negotiated with the Sheriff Department, but I think there was a part in there where it says that we were, once the contract was over, that it was a day-to-day, a month-to-month operation. He was wanting everybody to know that he just negotiated the straight contract, but there was an add-on from others within the contract. So he just wanted to make that noted in the minutes. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be numbered, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like, I have one item that I'd like to ask for unanimous consideration today, consent to consider today. It's a resolution authorizing assignment and assumption of an economic development agreement.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be numbered, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be numbered, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business? If not, we have, is there any department reports? Committee, board reports? We have a citizen request. We have Robert Hunter, allocation of coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds. If you'll give your name and address, please.
My name's Robert Hunter. I reside at 1109 Sixth Avenue. And I was wanting to come to y'all to talk about the allocation of funds for the COVID fiscal recovery funds, specifically about the comments that were made, I would think it was almost a month ago. Y'all put out the statement saying that you were accepting paperwork on what exactly you were going to use the funds for. And it's been a month later, and I was just wanting to check up on that and to clarify that specifically, at least 60% of all the comments, paperwork that I, we had entered, was specifically on the Free Stores, allocation of expenses and fees. We gave over 62 copies to the office, if I remember correctly. It would've been 63, but I forgot my own. And one of the things I wanted to also bring up is, to fully fund the Free Store, it would only take 2% of the $12 million budget over the next five years. Now, if most people don't know what the Free Store is, it's a location downtown, right next to the jailhouse. We specifically give away things for free. The only thing that isn't free is utilities like rent, electricity, water. We also would qualify under the same outline from the final interim report from the Department of Treasury, under 3.5, specifically under nonprofits and assist nonprofit organizations, and under earlier access to COVID funds for health disparities in certain areas. Because one of the things we also do is we have a free fridge. Because that area specifically is one of the highest homelessness rates in our current US census tract, we make sure that we have food and water and the ability for them to get it, even if we're not there. And that's about it. I just wanted an update on how that was going, and if possible, could I get those papers back, simply because we weren't able to get some of the contact information off those papers, if y'all hadn't disposed of them already.
Do you know who you gave them to?
I'm pretty sure they were turned into the clerk's office on the final day for comments, I think it was, was it the 16th of July, if I remember correctly?
Well, that would not be correct, and I wouldn't know that because they were not supposed to be turned into the clerk's office. They, they were, they were turned into, okay, they have them.
Oh, thank you for that.
Okay. We have remarks by the council and mayor. Mayor, you have any comment? Councilman Worthy?
Yeah, I'd just like to talk about the job fair next Tuesday, the 24th, from 9:00 to 1:00 at the venue. We have 70 employers so far, and all of the employers have openings. So if you need a job or looking for a better job, come on over, make sure you wear a mask. If you don't have one, we will furnish one for you. And then from 8:00 to 9:00, we'll do an employability skills seminar. And also, we're partnering with Quality of Life, they will be giving vaccines from 9:00 to 1:00 also. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon?
Thank you, Madam President. I've been gone the last couple of weeks. I've been in Tampa with my son and daughter-in-law and two grandkids. While I was gone, my daughter and her family moved to Tuscaloosa. And I want to put all the rumors to rest out there that everybody's saying that I'm going to run for city council next time. I'm not running for city council, I'm going to retire. So that's just a big rumor out there. And we'll probably, me and my wife will probably be moving, our kids want us to move, so we're probably going to be moving somewhere where my terms are. I just want to get that rumor squatted right there before anybody keeps calling and asking me if I'm going to run. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes, Madam President. Really quick, in response to Mr. Hunter's question, I know that the budget process has begun. I have not, as of yet, been a part of that process in depth, but we do typically meet one-on-one with the mayor's office to review the proposed budget prior to voting on it. And I know that process is in the works now. That review meeting hasn't happened yet, but I know it will in the future, and I'll be more than happy to follow up with you on where we are on those allocations of those funds. One quick clarification, we passed some new business today on the assignment of an economic development agreement. Just to clarify, this is pretty simple stuff. A couple of weeks ago, we approved a tax abatement deal with Olive Garden, but technically, because Olive Garden had not signed the lease yet with the property owner, we, the agreement was made with the property owner, not with Olive Garden specifically. Now that Olive Garden has committed and has a deal in place with the property owners, we're simply changing the name on the tax abatement from the property owner to Olive Garden LLC. So it's no additional money, we're just changing the person who's actually going to receive the abatements, the rebates. The jail contract, for those who you don't know, like many other municipalities in Etowah County, we do not operate our own jail here in Gaston, so we contract with Etowah County Sheriff's Department to house our incarcerated citizens. And that contract is basically set up on a per inmate, per day basis, based on the average number of incarcerated citizens from Gaston in that facility. So every year, we renew that. What you saw today was us approving that renewed contract. And again, further clarification, because the end of this renewed contract that we just signed will fall essentially during an election cycle, there's some questions about who would be in control at the time that the contract expires, or whether it would be good to have this body, you know, sign a contract on the last day before a new body took over, et cetera. So there was some language introduced in there that said, should we get to the end of this one-year contract, it can continue on a month-to-month rollover basis until we all sit back down and renegotiate a new contract. So those were the changes there. Let's see, what else? Also, I will go ahead and read this in. This is not an official introduction, but I will read in. I planned, I've submitted to the legal department for review a resolution that would grant the city council the authority to have final approval on certain heavy industrial use permits, or business licenses specifically. or business licenses specifically. So I'll go ahead and read this. This is a resolution requiring council approval of certain business licenses prior to issuance. Whereas the Gadsden City Council has the authority to issue business licenses pursuant to Article 3 of Chapter 74 of the city code, and whereas the Gadsden City Council also desires to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the public, to facilitate the development of the city in a manner that is attractive and increases prosperity, whereas to advance these purposes, the Gadsden City Council desires to review and approve certain business licenses prior to their issuance, and whereas Article 3 of Chapter 74, Section 62 and 63, provides that the director of revenue and the employees of the city revenue department is charged, are charged with the responsibility of administrating the city's business license tax and license issuance. Whereas the Gadsden City Council has full confidence in the abilities of the director of revenue and the employees of the city revenue department, but desires to amend Section 74-63 of the city code so as to provide that certain business licenses require council approval prior to issuance. Now therefore be it resolved by the Gadsden City Council, Article 3 of Chapter 74, Section 63, Subsection 5 of the city code, is hereby amended to provide that all licenses with license classifications described in Section 74-91 of the city code as relating to Schedule 64 and the corresponding NAICS Code classifications thereto, must, in addition to all other requirements, receive the approval of the city council of Gadsden before said license can be properly issued. So again, my hope is that the legal department will give us clearance to move forward with this next week, and we'll introduce it for a first reading. And in layman's terms, after reading that, essentially all this does is say that the city of Gadsden Council, the Gadsden City Council, has the authority to have final approval on specific heavy industrial use permits within the NAICS Classification Code 64, which is food processing, oils and fats specifically. So, thank you, Madam President, that's all I have.
Councilman Beck?
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to echo Ms. Gaither's comments from this morning. This is such a serious pandemic that we're involved in. School has just started back, there's already reports of students, students that are having COVID. I think if you remember, a year ago when we were talking, there really weren't, we didn't talk about kids having COVID, but now students are getting COVID. This variant is kind of adapting and changing. So we need to be really mindful of others and take the necessary steps that would be consulting with your physician, consulting with your pharmacist, to see what is best for you and your family. I'm not going to tell you what you should do, I'm not qualified to do that, but there's certain things I think we all should do as citizens that would look out for the betterment of our community. And so I do encourage you to speak with your trusted healthcare professional that you use for your family, just to get all the information you can get. There's already, just within a few days of school, students that are coming to school with fever, they're sick, there's, I probably know more people today than I've known at any one time in this pandemic that are either in the hospital, deathly ill, or about to go to the hospital because they're very sick. There's all kind of requests for prayer on social media, so obviously, we're all tired of this. And it's, and if that can make it go away, it would have gone away months ago. So the reality is, we have to be smart, we have to be careful, we have to be mindful of others, and we have to really think through our choices, because they just don't have ramifications on you or me, it has ramifications on everybody. So please, please think about your choices and think about what's best for your family and for your community. And that's just, I can't stress that enough, it's disheartening to hear the numbers and to hear what our healthcare professionals are going through. I have quite a few friends in the healthcare field, and they are, they're dropping like flies, they're leaving their jobs because they just can't take it anymore. We're just seeing that all over the country, and we're seeing it here in Gadsden. So please, please think it through, and please make the best decision for you and your family, but please be mindful of others. That's all I have, Madam President.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. The only thing I'll add is, and thank you, Councilman Wilson, for explaining the economic development agreement. I appreciate that, because I think that was necessary. COVID is deadly, and it's very serious, folks. And so, again, I'll echo many of the sentiments that you've already heard. Please, take steps to protect yourself and those that you love, those around you. Please make educated and informed decisions and not emotional decisions, and do what's necessary to protect the most vulnerable amongst, among us. You know, right now, the elderly, those with underlying conditions, and our children. Again, let's just please be smart as it relates to that, and continue to trend in the right, let's do, let's do some things that'll get us trending in the right direction. I think the football schedule calls for the first football game, high school football game of the year in the county this week. So this Friday, there're going to be, there's going to be that inclination for people to gather and support their teams, which there's nothing wrong with that, but just, let's just be smart, and let's just take, take the steps to make sure that we don't allow that to become a super-spreader event. But outside of that, thank you, and we appreciate everyone who's come out and supported the meeting today. Thank you.
Madam President, if I may, I'd like for everyone tonight, when you say your prayers, please be in prayer for Barbara and Ben Reed. They both got COVID, and they're doing a little better, but, you know, everybody could lift them up in your prayers, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
I have three announcements. One is there's going to be a ribbon cutting, I'm going to say about 12:15. About 12:15 at the Cousser Landing Boat Dock, where the new road from the vineyard has been ready and for travels. So we're going to have a ribbon cutting today about 12:15. Also, the end of the summer concert will be September the 6th, that's Labor Day, and it will be a concert with Bill Avery and his band at the Amphitheater. And the third thing has to do with, A.J. Tinker is a young man, and there's, he's a member of 100 Boys, and they're going to have a project this Saturday, beginning at 9:00. They're going to be cleaning up Lincoln Hill Cemetery. So if anyone is interested in coming out and joining to help these young boys with the project, they're the ones who painted the wall, and I noticed that they had to go back and repaint the wall again. So please take care of what someone is trying to do or to help your community. We all have to work together on that. If there's nothing else, I-
One question, no.
Okay.
When are we going to require masks at city halls? Is it just for the city council? Do we?
Just for the city council chambers, city council meetings, because it's not, we can't mandate.
Okay.
Am I correct on that, Mayor?
When the state emergency health order expired, I think, is when we lost the ability-
Yeah, we don't have the ability, so it's, we're just requiring and asking, I mean, we can't mandate that people in here wear masks, we're just asking that when you come in, you wear a mask. So it's not anything that we can mandate.
Well, if they heard it, they'd just text me that question.
Oh, okay, all right. If there's nothing else, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.